I know we have some special guests with us today with Atlanta Beltline. I know there's several interns here with Atlanta Beltline Incorporated. If y'all could stand up and we would love to see you. And then Ms. Johnson with Atlanta Beltline, if you could introduce your wonderful interns and tell us a little about what they're doing and what they're working on, you can feel free to share that in the podium for us.
Thank you, council members. Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Good afternoon. Jill Johnson, Vice President of Government Affairs, Atlanta Beltline. We are thrilled to bring to you today the Atlanta Beltline Inc. Summer Interns. They represent high schools throughout the city of Atlanta and they are spending time with us this summer. They just started this week, learning about the Atlanta Beltline and all of our programs. We've got students from Maynard Jackson High School. We've got students from Drew. We've got students from, I'm gonna, from Midtown High School. We've got students from all over the city. Are there any that I'm missing? Y'all help me out. Love it. Lakeside.
I heard Lakeside.
Awesome. Atlanta Westlake? Okay, great. So, we are thrilled. This is part of the Year of the Youth, the Mayor's Program and his initiative this year. We know that we're building this tremendous infrastructure project with economic development around the city and that it will be high school students like these and others, generations, who will inherit this infrastructure. And so, we want to make sure that they've got experience asking us questions about it, that they go visit the entire loop, they learn about the transit, the affordable housing programs, the parks, the trail construction and everything else. And so, today, we've decided to bring them down here to City Hall, excited to have them, to talk to them about government affairs, policies, regulations, the tough decisions that y'all have to make and debate amongst each other to decide what our city's gonna look like moving into the future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you and thank y'all for coming down to City Hall. So wonderful to see y'all and I hope that y'all learn a lot, not only just here, but with the internship that you're doing with Atlanta Beltline. We've been working with them for a long time and doing the people's work and so I just appreciate y'all being a part of making Atlanta that works for everybody. And Councilman Lewis, I know you have something to add.
And I've been smiling since I saw y'all out there. And so, I want to say I appreciate y'all for coming today. I appreciate y'all for doing the internship this summer. I hope y'all are truly taking in and digesting the stuff that you're doing and you saving some coins on the side. I wish that, I wish that y'all would've signed up for public comment today because this is the department, this is actually the committee that talks about stuff they want to do for y'all. So, I wish I would've got some of y'all to sign up on that public comment list today so we can hear about some of the stuff that you want to receive and some of the stuff that you want to see the city start doing. But, enjoy the day, take some notes, take some photos. Don't get too loud, get on your Instagram a little bit and have fun.
Thank you, Councilman Lewis. Councilmember Waits.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to give a shout out to the Lakeside alumnus out there as a fellow graduate and so hello and welcome to all of you. Salim, you're serving in my office and so again, congratulations and looking forward to working with all of you.
Thank y'all so much. Good to see y'all.
Thank you, Beltline.
And thank you, Atlanta Beltline, for bringing them out. All right, so next on the agenda is public comment. We have two individuals sign up for public comment. The first is Ms. Henry, there you are, Ms. Jordan. Just a reminder, you'll have three minutes for public comment. Roughly around a 32nd mark, I'll try to give you an indication of how much time you have left, but good to see you.
Give an answer to the Spirit of God to everyone that's here. For the wrath of God to rear from heaven against all ungodliness and unrighteousness of men who hold the truth in unrighteousness. Romans 1:18 verse. Unrighteousness is failure in the morals, fear or injustice toward man. Money given by unrighteousness will wreak terrible consequences that you will regret, James Grif. Hell and destruction are never full, so the eyes of man are never satisfied. Proverbs 27:28 verse. The amazing thing is that the earth goes on, but man, the height of God's creation, passes into eternity with no remembrance. And seeing one of them suffer wrong, he defended him and avenged him that was oppressed and smote the Egyptian. Acts 7:24 verse. Moses fought against oppression before God called him. God killed the Egyptian because they refused to stop oppressing the Israelites. Jesus said, "He will kill for me for those who choose to oppress me." Do you want to be killed? Christ said to warn you. Whoso robs his father or his brother and saith, it is no transgression, the same is compassion companion of a destroyer. Proverbs 28:24 verse. The son was therefore written to enable God's people to rise above the ungodly drive for riches. Jesus helped me to put my children before, Jesus helped me not to put my children before him. I gotta learn to trust in the flesh of what the flesh can do, but what Christ can do in me. Because Christ is greater than us and we'll never exceed His power. We need His power to fight against Satan in us, around us and in others. Because the devil have real power, but Christ's power is greater. His word is greater than Satan's word. That's when I have to seek Christ to fight sin in me and in others also. And we see what's going on in the world today about China and China don't believe in the word of God. And we want, we need power to fight against China because they believe in oppression. Sometimes what y'all do promotes oppression too. But, we're here to correct one another in doing what Christ says to do because we need Him more than He need us. It's a blessing to serve Christ. It's a blessing to obey Christ. It's what He can do in us, around us and in others. He do give us warning about sin in us and we thank Him for having mercy upon us.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan. Before we go to our next speaker, I want to now introduce my Councilmember Byron Amos to my left. Our next speaker is Zachary Murray. Come on up to the podium and once again, you'll have three minutes.
Good afternoon, Zach Murray. I'm a resident of Lakewood Heights and organizing director with the Guild. I guess I wanted to start my remarks today with some gratitude, Councilman Dozier, for ensuring that the Housing Trust Fund is being fully funded. We have no excuse not to meet that obligation. We know, lest we forget what you all did to invent money for COPS City, but, which is being set aside for 30 years. I also want to give gratitude to whatever city officials are responsible for ensuring that our pools are free because free pools equal a safe city. That's a really good thing. We just tragically lost two 17-year-old and 18-year-old in my neighborhood, Carver Homes and we have to do as much as we can to lift up our young people at this time. One example of what we can do is to create a youth jobs guarantee. This wouldn't be very expensive, but would ensure that every young person in this city gets job training, gets pay to take home and to ensure that they can have their needs met. Back to the Housing Trust Fund. We need a written report from Mr. Humphries' office regarding year one of the commitments and programs. There've been a lot of vague mentions about small site missing middle funding, about code enforcement being pulled out, about hunger programs being funded, but it's time that the city council, specifically you all, are prescriptive about what needs, what funds, what the funds can be used to support. So, we need you to legislate the funding priorities because the Housing Trust Fund is not intended to be a slush fund. It's intended to promote the protection, preservation, protection and production of affordable housing and unfortunately, it's not clear how that was met in year one. So, we asked as a coalition for Mr. Humphries to produce that report over a year ago at this point and we still haven't seen it. And so, in order for us to move forward and to ensure that the funding's being spent effectively, it's about time that we see that. And again, that you all create the priorities. I also want to announce, one of the other important priorities in this is tenant organizing and anti-displacement. And the city hasn't really developed any effective programs to support those types of things. Simply producing affordable housing at Atlanta housing sites or wherever doesn't address the active displacement that's happening in neighborhoods like mine in Lakewood Heights. And so, organizations like the Housing Justice League deserve city support. It's time that there are grants available at the city level that recognize the importance of tenant organizing. I'm not sure what the Office of the Tenant Council or whatever you all just passed in this budget is gonna do, but that also shouldn't come from the Housing Trust Fund. That should come from you all's general fund. Now, I want to also announce the, that the Guild has partnered with the Housing Justice League and AFSC to launch a new community land trust in the city of Atlanta called the People's Land Trust. We actually just closed on a property in Peoplestown that's gonna house a resident who was displaced from her home of 27 years in Decatur. She'll now be a resident in a home that she will own. She's going for retirement in two years. She's a worker in the cafeteria in Shambly and she's gonna have a home. We have a gap right now, we have a wonderful land trust in the city of Atlanta, but we have a gap in the sense that we don't have services that are being met to meet people where they're, where they're being displaced. Vacant homes don't support people where they're being displaced. We can preserve housing, we can buy housing, rehab housing to ensure that residents who have the greatest need at 30% to 50% and mine below are being, their needs are being met and I really urge you all to do that and love to have further conversation with you all at some point about that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Murray. All right, before we move to the next item on the agenda, I am a little bit remiss because we have some other interns in the room that I want to make sure we have an opportunity to acknowledge. So, I know we have some folks here interning at City Hall or sit for at city council offices. Could y'all stand real quick and just, just to be acknowledged? So, I just want to also highlight the folks that are also here doing the work day in and day out to make sure our city is running on time. So, I just want to say thank y'all for the work that y'all are doing. What was said for the Beltline interns also applies to y'all as well. I know we see a lot of y'all every day. Just thank y'all for your service to the city of Atlanta and I know y'all are gonna be future policymakers. Y'all gonna be working for Department of City Planning one day. Y'all gonna be making our city run the way it needs to be. So, I appreciate this being a, y'all getting that taste of what governance looks like and what serving the people looks like. So, thank y'all for being here as well. Thank you. All right, so the next item on the agenda is actually presentations, but colleagues, I know we have a number of folks who are here for various appointments and I would actually like to get those communications out the way so that we can give folks back the rest of their day. Seeing no issues with that, we'll go ahead and take the first communication, item number two. Josh Humphries, I have not seen yet and so we can actually take the next one until he gets here, which is item number three, which is our very own Ms. Amber A. Robinson. If you could sound a caption, Mr. Evans, and we'll go from there.
23C 5079, a communication from Mayor Andre Dickens, reappointing Ms. Amber A. Robinson to serve as a member of the Municipal Market Company Board of Directors. This appointment is for a term of two years.
Ms. Robinson, I know you've heard this show before, but tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in this appointment.
Hi, good afternoon, Amber A. Robinson. I am very, very pleased and honored to be named for the reappointment to the Municipal Market Board of Directors. I've very much enjoyed serving on this board since the close of 2021 and I'm very thankful to Mayor Dickens and his team, Mr. Pace, City Attorney Nina Hickson, as well as all the support of this Atlanta City Council, which has enabled me to be reappointed to this position. I care a lot about the city and especially its history and how it interacts and provides services to the people. I grew up in metro Atlanta and as a resident, growing up around here, did have opportunity with my parents to visit the municipal market for a special occasion shopping and so forth. So, it's been my pleasure to serve in the law appointment to this board. I'm looking forward to continuing to serve and I did, I think I would be remiss if I didn't point out that I see this as a continuation of the service that I have, you know, given to the city for many years now, which began as an intern myself. I've, I actually started as an intern, like many of those that are in the audience today and have been with the city ever since. So, it's been, it's been a complete joy and I am very grateful of the opportunity to continue to serve.
Any questions or comments from colleagues?
With approval.
There's a motion to approve.
Second.
Second by Councilman Lewis. Any discussion? All right, please open the vote.
Vote is open. The vote is closed.
The item is favorable, five a's, zero n's. Any Councilmember Lewis, you had some more comments?
I want to say congratulations, but I also want to say that I hope this inspires the young folks in the audience because I started here as an intern too in '05 and I've just seen '04 for you. And so, the 20-year, what it should look like, I, I think it looks how it's supposed to look. I appreciate you. Congratulations again.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Thank you for your continued service to the city of Atlanta. All right, we'll go ahead and move to one item off held. Item number 30, 35, Ms. Jennifer McDonald, if you could come to the podium and we'll sound that caption and we'll go from there. Mr. Evans.
23R 3606, a resolution by Committee on Counsel appointing the Atlanta Board of Education's nominee, Ms. Jennifer McDonald, as the city council appointee to the Board of Directors of the Atlanta Development Authority, DBA Invest Atlanta, for a term of four years scheduled to begin on the date of the approval of this resolution and for other purposes.
Ms. McDonald, similar before, tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in this appointment to the Invest Atlanta Board.
Sure, so I represent District 4 for the Board of Education. I am an APS mom. We've been in APS for going on 11 years, so I take that role very seriously. This is a great opportunity for me to really dive into the intersection between what we're doing from a school board perspective and Invest Atlanta, who is all about prosperity and opportunity and community. So, our board chair asked me to consider the opportunity and I was glad to do it and I'm looking forward to working together.
Any questions or comments from colleagues? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and move approval. Second by Winston. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed.
Communications favorable, four a's, zero n's. Congratulations and thank you for your continued service to the city of Atlanta and I look forward to serving alongside you at the Invest Atlanta Board.
Good to see you, Jason. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right.
Mr. Chair, we should refer this one to COC now.
Oh, thank you. This will be referred to.
We're gonna move.
We're gonna make a motion to, I'll move to refer to COC. Second by Winston. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. Would all members please vote? And the vote is closed.
All right, the motion to refer is favorable, four a's, zero n's. And just for the public, this has been referred to the Committee on Counsel. Those meetings are held the day of our full council meeting, so I believe August the 7th is when it'll go back on the agenda. All right, going back to communications, is Mr. Humphries here yet? What we can do is just move forward with presentations and then that should give some time for him to come for that communication. So, with that, first presentation, this is the Department of Grants and Community Development, Quarterly Update. We have Commissioner DeBora Lonan. Always so good to see you.
Thank you.
Vote is yours.
Thank you, sir. Good afternoon and good afternoon, council members. I'm DeBora Lonan with the Department of Grants and Community Development and I do wish to acknowledge two of my team members who are present with us today. We have Michelle Price and Debbie Hairston. They're trying to hide in the back, but they are here. So, I shared this in January. It's just what the department has coined and we remind ourselves of this often. We are doing good in the community while grounded in service. We are committed to moving Atlanta forward and dedicated to excellence. Most of this is a reminder for you, but I will say it for those in the audience who may not be familiar with the Department of Grants and Community Development. We are tasked with facilitating the city's HUD entitlement grants, Community Development Block Grants, commonly referred to as CDBG, the Home Investment Partnership Program, Emergency Solutions Grants and Housing Opportunities for Persons with AIDS, HOPWA. We also facilitate the Section 8 Moderate Rehab Program. This is a project-based rental assistance program. And while HUD is phasing out the program, the Federal Recovery Funds Program, we do still as a city have these funds and we are working to close that out. Additionally, DGCD has been tasked with assisting city of Atlanta departments with applying for, obtaining, learning about and just applying for competitive grants. So, those are funds outside of HUD grants. DGCD itself also applies for competitive grants. The key facts listed here have been updated since January and so these were shared with you in more detail back in April. And the next few slides are just the metrics upon which we base our funding and our awards for each of those programs that I mentioned earlier. So, for instance, the top priorities when we are making allocations for the CDBG funds is to focus on low-income benefit, low-income benefit specific to capital projects and public services and ESG, of course, are the funds that we direct towards homeless services. HOPWA again are funds directed for housing opportunities for persons with AIDS and then home funds are to build affordable housing. Since our last update, the city's Department of Grants and Community Development has assisted departments with applying for approximately $51 million of competitive funding and $34 million has been awarded thus far. I know you all are primarily concerned about payments and how we are dealing with reimbursing the city's sub recipients and so the updates coming up next are addressing just that. The Emergency Solutions Grants, to date, this is calendar year 2023, the Department of Grants and Community Development has paid reimbursement requests totaling $1,224,347.62. For the Community Development Block Grants, we have paid reimbursement requests totaling For the HOPWA program, DGCD has paid reimbursement requests totaling $11,782,489.47. And I want to pause here and just bring to your attention that the total amount paid in reimbursements for HOPWA last year was $12,619,641. So, as of July 3rd, we have paid almost that amount in reimbursements and will certainly exceed. It's just to ensure you that we are still on track and making those payments timely. Now, the difference between drawdowns and reimbursements is the city reimburses our sub recipients with general funds. Then we turn around and draw down federal funds, the HUD funds that we are allocated to reimburse ourselves. All of this is vitally important, but what HUD looks at primarily is how quickly are we drawing down those funds? How quickly are we paying ourselves back thereby showing them that we are in fact utilizing these funds and doing so timely? I will go into just a little bit of detail because there's been some changes since the last update. For the allocations received for FY15, this means these are the funds that the city of Atlanta received from the federal government for FY15. The only remaining balance is for the home program and that's in the amount of $512,131.17. Those funds expire this year and Councilmember Amos, I know that you've expressed an interest in having that type level information brought to your attention. We are not in jeopardy of losing the funds, but they do expire this year, which means that we as a city must draw down those funds by the end of this year. For the funds that we were allocated in FY16, you'll see that we have a balance for CDBG. Those funds also expire this year, so by the end of this year, we must draw down the remaining balance of $830,372 and we are on track to do just that. And our home funds expire next year and we have a little bit over a million dollars of home funds that must be drawn down by next year. Then for FY17, we have a balance of CDBG. We have, keep going, all right. We have a balance in the CDBG and the home allocations. The CDBG funds must be completely drawn by the end of 2024 and the home funds must be drawn 2025 in completion. For FY18, we have CDBG in home. FY18 CDBG funds expire in 2025 and FY18 home funds expire in 2026. The FY19 allocation, CDBG funds expire in 2026. The home funds expire in 2027 and the HOPWA funds expire December of this year. You may recall that we asked for an extension on our HOPWA 19 funds. We are timely obliging with the terms of that agreement and we have made a recent draw of approximately $4 million and so we are on track to fully draw the FY19 HOPWA funds by the end of this year, if not before. And then the same for FY20, 21 and 22. Now, as for general updates, we are, like most of the departments within the city, still working on hiring and retaining staff. Recruiting staff is also at the top of our list of priorities. We did just this week hire for two additional key positions, so I'm very excited and grateful for the assistance we received from HR and all of our supporting departments. We still have about a 23% vacancy, but we're hopeful and optimistic that we'll not only recruit qualified, talented applicants, but that we'll also be able to retain them. We continue to reimburse timely. You know, you'll recall that once upon a time, in an era where we don't wish to revisit, we were many, many, many days behind in reimbursements, but we are averaging less than 30 days every month in reimbursing all of our requests. We're also leveraging all of the assistance and the resources we have in conducting internal training for staff as well as external training for our sub recipients and we continue to monitor timely. Monitoring is mandatory and we monitor our sub recipients in the same manner that HUD monitors us. We've also recently issued our Notice of Funding Availability. That's actually before you all today and I believe you'll be sending that over to council and that's for the 23 funding from HUD. That's our most recent allocation. So, a few slides ago, I showed you that we had 15, 16, all the way through 22. In my next presentation to you, you'll see the 23 funds and their expiration and then the progress that we are making with those funds. I've already shared that we are in fact timely meeting our federal draw deadlines and we are utilizing the ARPA funds that we were allocated as a department. We've already fully integrated our new management, grant management system and that's nothing new to most of our sub recipients. It's just that the city was not yet utilizing that system and so now we're working a lot more efficiently. We have increased the engagement with the city's departments in the area of competitive grants and recently, the Department of Grants and Community Development directly applied for $4.4 million to help mitigate lead hazard in homes within the city. So, we are really trusting and believing that the application was a good application and we'll be able to use those funds for our low-income residents. We're also working with the Mayor's HOPWA Modernization Task Force and we have some great announcements in conjunction with our partners on how those funds are being utilized to ensure affordable housing for our residents. And so, at this point, I will turn it over to you for questions. Thank you so much for your attention.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Lonan. Before I turn over to colleagues, just first a couple of comments myself and then a couple of questions myself, but the first thing I just want to say, just want to give you and your team just the biggest kudos in the world for the way y'all have been able to accomplish. When I came into office a year and a half ago, when I started chairing this committee a year and a half ago, one of the first things that I heard was in the wake of, you know, news reporting that we were about to lose however many millions of federal dollars because of mismanagement of the HOPWA program to talking with providers and they had several, they were owed money for years and then several were having to carry that, carry interest and were going under because of that financial burden based on how long it was taking the city to reimburse them. You've been so remarkable in getting those things addressed. To see in the, the average reimbursement go, timeline go from 144 days to less than 30 days is remarkable in itself, but the fact that y'all have been so diligent in getting all this money out the door and trying to make sure that we're not giving any money back because I know we have a lot of families in our city and our communities that are hurting and need this help. And so, I just appreciate you and your team and the work that y'all have been doing day in and day out and making that happen.
Thank you.
And so, just one of the, the things that I wanted to share with my colleagues, I know you and I have talked about this already, but the HOPWA Modernization Task Force that Commissioner Lonan had mentioned, I also serve on that task force and as we had the conversation about NOFAs and NOFA process, as was mentioned- And, um, as we had the conversation about NOFAs and NOFA process, and as was mentioned, there's legislation before us today about the most recent NOFA. Um, uh, one of the things that I, I think about a lot is we have a lot of, uh, community organizations. We have a lot of, uh, community development corporations, a lot of groups working to do the work day in and day out. Um, and, uh, would love to be a part of this process. So, uh, one of the things I've asked for is for, and I'm just restating this out loud, is we'll love for the Department of Grants and Community Development, uh, to, uh, your communications or your notifications about these NOFAs or these opportunities. Let us be your ambassadors and work with our community stakeholders so that, uh, groups that are applying for, uh, community development block grants, or for home grants, or for HOPWA funding opportunities, they know about these opportunities as they come up, uh, because we know that the work needs to be done, that it needs to be done in our communities. And who better to do that work than folks who've been operating our community for a long time and are always looking for ways to expand their scope and expand their reach? And so, uh, that's something I've asked for, but I just want y'all to be aware that, uh, that wasn't asked made up the department.
Yes, sir.
Then, um, uh, just my last, uh, comment or question. Where you're working with other citywide departments for competitive grant opportunities. Um, I recognize that there's a lot of, um, other folks within the city are working on applications for, uh, infrastructure dollars or reach grants and, uh, mega grants and things like that, tied to transportation, tied to the infrastructure, uh, the, the big infrastructure act from last year. Can you talk to how you're coordinating with those departments, whether it's for those grants or either, or other grant opportunities? I know, uh, Justice 40 is a big, uh, environmental justice lens we're using with a lot of our grant applications. And I don't know if y'all have already started doing work with, uh, Chief Farley and that work to, to get maybe additional federal dollars to support projects across the city through that lens. But can you just talk through what that relationship and partnership with other city departments is what like?
Yes, sir. There is in fact communication amongst all of the departments. I provide updates to cabinet members quite regularly. Uh, they have our contact information. They understand our tasks and our duties and what our specific goals are in working with the other departments. We do share communication. And the mayor has recently assigned Megan Sparks to help centralize this process a little bit more and make sure we're all communicating effectively. But when we receive applications from other departments, we're also tasked with tracking those, uh, reporting those metrics back to the mayor's office so that it's not just between us and whichever departments are applying, but we can then share that information across the entire city. Now, outside of the city, I believe the mayor's office works on sharing that information and collaborating. But we provide, uh, the information to the city's departments. We collect the information received from the city's departments. And when we get information or we learn of application opportunities, for instance, very recently, we learned of FEMA funding available. We send information out to those departments we know touch the various areas and then also share it in cabinet. So there are some additional efforts underway to make sure that we are in fact continuing to strengthen the collaborative efforts.
Then when there's, um, federal earmark opportunities, does your office get involved in that collaboration or coordination work? Or is that largely with our government affairs folks that are taking on that challenge?
Our extent right now is making sure that all departments, all relevant departments are aware. And we don't necessarily have all of the resources or the manpower to walk them through every step, but they do share their metrics and their responses back with us so that we're able to... We want to capitalize on every opportunity that comes to our attention. But again, outside of those immediate responsibilities, it's the mayor's office that's tracking other aspects. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner. Alright, uh, just giving my colleagues a, uh, opportunity, uh, Councilmember Lewis.
Commissioner, I appreciate you to coming, and I echo his comments when I say the work that your team has done since we got in office has been remarkable. And I appreciate you for, uh, the updates. Uh, my question, my first question is around the home funding. Looking at it, that's the funding that goes back the furthest. Can it be, can years be combined when you're using the funding?
We can combine years in our awards to our developers, but we don't combine the years as... Well, let me ask what you mean specifically.
Well, let's say if we have, well, 20 fiscal year 15 and fiscal year 16, 500,000 plus the 1.3 million. Could we combine that and spend it together, or how would that?
Okay, I understand, to have a greater impact. So at the time that we make these awards, we are considering many factors. How do we get the biggest bang for our buck? You can't really do much with our total allocation. There's not a lot you can do in the City of Atlanta with the entire 1.475 million dollars of home funding from 15. But if you take the home funding, which is GAAP financing, and you combine it with, or you look at an applicant that says, "I also have CDBG funding, and I have private funding, and I have all these other funding, and we're going to be impacting areas that have the greatest needs," where it is accessibility to grocery stores and accessibility to public infrastructure. We consider all of that when making the awards. What you see in this presentation is the amount that's left. Those funds are already awarded. They just need to be spent, and then we need to reimburse and draw them down.
And my next question, I'm always thinking about jobs for, uh, new folks. Thinking about, uh, people entering the job market. Of the 23% of your job, of your unemployment, how much, how many of that, what percentage of it, or how many of the jobs are entry-level?
Our 23% vacancies?
Yes. That's the job people are thinking about. They're thinking about how they get their, uh, foot in the door so they can learn and grow.
We have, so the way our, our department is divided into three primary offices, and then the Office of the Commissioner. Each office has entry-level positions, and then we really encourage promoting from within. So you've come, you've learned, now you can be promoted thereby now opening up another opportunity for us to bring someone from, on the, uh, entry level. The majority of our vacancies are in fact entry-level. Yes, sir.
Do you know how many?
Yeah, sure. So in the Office of Program Operations, we have three. Three of the five positions are entry-level. But I do want to share with Councilmember Lewis that our positions require some level of knowledge or exposure to grants, to programmatic, uh, contracting, to fiscal knowledge. So entry-level for us is more, you've got your degree, and while you may not know HUD entitlement, you know something, and then we can train you from there. So I wanted to put that caveat out a little bit. We also have interns.
Do you have any, any entry-level positions that you can meet that?
Like just basic entry-level, you don't have to know anything about entitlements? Not at this moment. We, well, we do. We have an inspector position, and so that doesn't require entitlement knowledge, just the ability to read and learn how to do inspections.
So we got one job, we can, we can try to find somebody to get a job in the inspector position?
Yes, and we are working very diligently on filling that position, actually, so...
I'm working with you now.
I appreciate it, but I'm optimistic that we'll probably fill that one sooner rather than later with an Atlanta resident.
You better beat me to it, I appreciate you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lewis. Councilmember Amos?
Sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, Director London, thank you for all the work that you have done to keep us moving and running effectively. Help me understand deadlines. So I know we have two, one to draw down and one to spend the funds. What about possible pass-through grants that may come from other municipalities, say the state? Do we get a different deadline, or are we adhered to the same deadline in which they drew it down? How, how would that affect us in getting money out if we, um, get a pass-through grant?
So I think I know the instance that you're referring to, but specific to what DGCD is tasked with, we have our deadlines. Our deadlines are our deadlines. We're not impacted by the funds that the state receives because the City of Atlanta is an entitlements community. We get our funds directly from the federal government. DCA gets the state portion of funding. Their deadlines don't impact us at all. And specific to these funds, DCA has never said to DGCD or City of Atlanta, "Do you want the rest of our HOPWA funds?" So that's a very different situation. And specific to our department, we know the deadlines. And in the instances from the past where we were running up on those deadlines, there is a process in place with specific procedures on how to ask for an extension. That's what happened with our HOPWA 19 funds. We went through that process with the support of the mayor's office. We got the extension. We will meet that deadline. So we're not impacted by the other types of instances that the city may have experienced.
Alright, thank you.
Yes, sir.
You have a chair.
Thank you, Councilmember Amos. Councilmember Weston?
Thank you, uh, Chair Dozier, and thank you, Commissioner Alonin, for being here today. Um, first, I would thank you for the work, especially as it pertains even legislation that we have today around, uh, Section 8, um, housing, you know, opportunities in my districts. And I appreciate your team and the hard work that they've been doing around that. One of the things that I saw in your presentation that I'm not as familiar with, how we can partner, especially councilmembers, with the blight reduction and neighborhood cleanup program that you are offering. I'm just wondering if you could provide some more insight into those opportunities and how we may be able to partner on that?
Absolutely. Most of our blight reduction, uh, funding would be CDBG. Of course, HUD entitlement funds come with very strict regulations. There are things that you can do and things that you cannot do. We can use CDBG funds for blight reduction, and we have in fact awarded funds to our sub recipients for a blight reduction. The City of Atlanta, for the most part, is not a direct service provider. We are a pass-through entity. We receive the funds. We do our very best to identify sub recipients who are well and best situated to provide those services. So the best way that we can help is once those funds are in fact awarded, we then engage with the sub recipients. Let us know when you're, uh, going into communities. Let us know when you're trying to identify the best communities to put, or the most needful communities to put those funds in. Um, our staff is hands-on. We may not be direct service providers, but we are fully engaged in our communities. And so when they share information with us, we can certainly pass that on to you as it relates to actually engaging and doing the work. We just fund them, and then we make sure that they use the funds as contracted.
Okay, so would the best, best step for us be able to provide you a list of communities or neighborhoods that we'd like to see help in these areas? And then you would be able to go, go out and find the sub recipients who may be best fit?
So if you know of communities where that funding is necessary, then it goes back to kind of what Councilmember Dozier was saying. When we have that window of opportunity for the NOFA funding and the application process is open, they would need to apply. We try to be really objective because we never have enough money to meet the need. As a matter of fact, in the NOFA legislation that's before you now, you'll see that many applied and very few were awarded because we just don't have enough money. What we do is prior to the application process, we educate, we inform, we share what it takes to have a good application. And we also are really diligent about sharing what HUD requires for this reimbursement that I've shared with you. It's a lot of work. It's not just turning the invoice and get your money back. It's a lot of work, and they need to come with the capacity to do that work. So we try to help them in preparing the best application they can submit because once they've submitted, we can't give any additional encouragement or guidance because we want to be consistent across the board. So if in fact you have some entities who are in need of those funds, let us know now, and we'll put them on our listserv so when we start that process, we can engage them.
Okay, very helpful. I appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
And Councilmember Weston, any other questions or comments from colleagues? Seeing none, thank you so much once again, Commissioner Alonin.
Thank you, and I think I'll be back before you for two additional pieces. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, uh, colleagues, uh, before we go to the next presentation, uh, we have a little bit more agenda jujitsu to get through. Uh, I know we have Director Humphries with us, um, and so we can go ahead and take that communication, which is item, uh, number two. Uh, Mr. Humphries, if you could, come to the podium. Mr. Evans, if you sound a caption, and we'll go ahead and take the item, and then we'll move back into presentations.
Item number two is 23C-5078, a communication from Mayor Andre Dickens, appoint, reappointing Mr. Joshua Humphries to serve as a member of the Municipal Market Company Board of Directors. This appointment is for a term of two years.
Mr. Humphries, uh, as always, good to see you. Uh, tell us a little bit about yourself and then why you're interested in this reappointment.
Sure. Hi, everyone. Uh, Josh Humphries, um, serve as Senior Advisor to the Mayor for Housing, and, um, be an honor to, to be reappointed to this board. Uh, the Municipal Market is, uh, a hundred, a little over a hundred years old now. Was originally created to serve real fresh food and small business needs in the city. Um, and a hundred years later is still doing that. Food halls are proliferating around the city right now. But this is the original, kind of, food destination, uh, that's served, long-served a need in downtown Atlanta and for, for city residents, both in fresh food access and in small business incubation. I think of Bell Street Burritos and Grindhouse Burgers and others that have, that have started at the Municipal Market and have grown, um, and, and add new locations throughout the city. Just this weekend, I was, uh, biking back from Piedmont Park on the Belt Line and saw Three Peaches Gelato that's opening up, um, in one of the storefronts, uh, right there at the corner at 10th and Monroe. And that's a, another business that started in the curb market and has now expanded with a second location outside the curb market. And so, you know, it's, it's honored to be a part of that board. And I think the next, uh, several years, uh, we're, we're excited to see what the, the growth of the market looks like and what the next life of this market is as it moves into its second century, um, together.
Any questions or comments from colleagues? Councilmember Lewis?
The, uh, curb market is going through some very tough times right now. And we've had, uh, comments from folks at City Hall about taxes not being paid and, uh, things that's... Are you, are you ready for, for the hard questions? And not just hard questions, for, uh, some, for, for some, the things that come after not paying your taxes?
Yeah, so a couple of thoughts on that. One, I mean, the, the curb market itself, um, there was a recent audit that was done on it, um, and then a correction to that audit, uh, around, uh, some of the, the market comps that were pretty far off based on the way they were done there. And so I encourage you to take a look at that because I think that does bring into a lot of the financial questions on it. At the end of the day, the market serves a pu, a public benefit, I believe, right? The, of creating small business incubation opportunities and fresh food access. And keeping that at below-market rate is, is really important, right? You want to have opportunities for small businesses to be able to come in at a cheap price point in a small space, in, in a spot that really sets them up for success so they can grow and, and, and thrive in the long run. And that, that's really the purpose it's played for a very long time. The same for fresh food access. I mean, the market has some of the, the cheapest produce that you're going to find, um, in all of Atlanta, and, and really serves a vital needs for providing fresh food access in the city. And so, yes, we, we've, we are, the, the majority of the board has turned over in the last few months. Um, and, you know, we had the, the longtime market manager, um, Pam, that ran that market for almost two decades. She passed away suddenly a couple of months back. And so there is, there is some transition that's happening. But I think that with, with a new board that we have in place, and, and really the, the mayor's focus on making sure that the, the curb market is a successful, thriving, um, contributor to the city at the end of the day is really important. So there are details around the, the lease and other types of things that like, we got to get that in place. But I think that it has, it has long and continued to serve a really important role for the city. And I think that we can work through, uh, the challenges we faced over the last few months to, to get it back on, on track and, and really headed towards something we can all continue to be proud of. Because I do think it is a marquee item for the city that, that it has been for a long time.
I appreciate you.
And Councilmember Lewis, any other questions or comments? There's a motion to approve by Winston, second by Lewis. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. Would all members please vote?
Alright, the item is favorable, 5 days, you're an ace. Thank you for your continuous here at the City of Atlanta. And, and Mr. Humphries, uh, one thing, I, I don't know if you're going to be speaking to any of the items on the agenda later, uh, but in case not, I did want to make you aware, at least one of the public comments today has some questions, and, and I know some of our colleagues have similar questions about the Housing Trust Fund and, uh, how funds have been spent or how well they would be spent. Happy to talk with you after the meeting, but we'd love to see what we can do to get more information about that.
Sure, and I'd be, you know, la, I think it was last month and the month before, we made a presentation with the Housing Commission that kind of talked through really spending to date, what funds are available, how it's been used. If it would be helpful, we, you know, I'd be happy to work with you and find a time to come and do that for this committee as well.
Absolutely.
Alright, cool.
Thank you. Alright, going back to presentations, uh, Mr. Burt. Good to see you again, sir. Uh, we have, uh, David Burt, Executive Director at Fort McPherson Local Redevelopment Authority for your annual report. Uh, good to see you again.
Yeah, good to see you. Thank you for having me. Um, yes, I'm Executive Director. I'm, uh, back here, I was here last year to give an update. And I did, I did a little bit different presentation this year to kind of give some background because I've realized that a lot of people just don't understand sort of the complicated background of, of Fort Mac and how we got where we were. So I wanted to do a little bit of... Did we lose the mic?
It, so just for the public awareness, whenever one of us drops a pin or our phone or whatever, it sorts it for a second, so just keep talking, but yeah, you're good.
So I want to give a little bit of history, kind of go through a timeline. So probably most people know this, but Fort McPherson was in Atlanta for a long, long time. Was founded in September 1885 as an army base. Uh, was used during World War I for prisoners of war. The 2005 Base Realignment and Closure Commission recommended the closure of Fort McPherson. And that resulted in losing almost 3,000 civilian jobs. That was a huge hit to the whole South Side of Atlanta. So after the closure was announced, the state of Georgia created the McPherson Local Redevelopment Authority, which was a planning authority. And so they really left, led the planning efforts while the base was still open and preparing to close. In 2010, they created a new entity that was the Implementing Authority, McPherson Implementing Local Redevelopment Authority. Sometimes we call it Milra, sometimes Fort Mac LRA, but that's the same thing. And so we are a local government authority created by the state of Georgia. So we're not affiliated directly with the city or the county. We're a state authority. But the way it's set up, our board members are nominated by the mayor of Atlanta, the mayor of East Point, Fulton County, and then the governor makes a couple of nominations himself, and then the governor finalizes those appointments. So we're very integrated with local government, city and county, but we are a state authority. So Milra was created in 2010. And I didn't work at Milra at that time, didn't work there till a few years ago. But even I saw in the paper lots of plans for things. And so a lot of these things just really didn't happen. There was a big plan for Biotech Park. There were a lot of different things. But in 2015, the army finally closed and they conveyed the 450 acres of the fort to Milra, the new organization, under an economic development conveyance, which has a legal meaning with the Base Realignment and Closure. So immediately, 330 acres were sold to Tyler Perry Studios for the current studio space. And I've got a map that comes up next that'll explain all of this. And that left Fort Mac LRA, Milra, with about 145 acres to plan and figure out something to do that would be meaningful for Atlanta and the community. You'll see on the next slide, it's kind of a strange shaped piece of property. So there were more plans that happened and things, you know, happened and didn't happen for different reasons. But finally, some of the plans came together and we started to sell property. So I think this is a great time to have this presentation because we're really shifting from an organization that for years, over 10 years, over a decade, talked about plans and different plans and what are we going to do to one that is actually implementing these things and selling the property. And so the first sale was in 2019 where the former Forces Command Building called ForceCom, huge office building, modern office building, was sold to Easterly Government Properties for $17 million. They will renovate that and lease the building to the U.S. Food and Drug Administration, the FDA, for labs and offices. The facility that's in Midtown on Peachtree Street will move there and other facilities. But that did something else. That brought some activity to the site. They've done the demolition. They had to work on doing some value engineering with the federal government. But they're supposed to start construction again this fall on putting things back. But that money allowed us to finally get in a better position financially. Because when I first came to Milra about four and a half years ago, it was very uncertain future all the time. There was very little funding. And so that let us pay off our debts. We paid money that we owed to you, the city of Atlanta. We paid off the last of the $30 million that was owed to the army. And so that put us on a better trajectory financially where we could then start to work on some of these things to get development going. So we have, for a couple of years now, a year and a half, the rest of our property besides that has been under contract and now part of it has been sold. So the, about 37 acres, and you'll see this on the map, was under contract to Tyler Perry Studios and it has now been sold. It was not, it is not for expansion of the studios themselves. It's for an entertainment district that will be open to the public, no fence. Anything we have now can't be fenced off. And it will have an entertainment district, a large theater for the public and a lot of office space there. So that 37 acres closed right at the end of last year of 2022. So all of the remaining 95 acres was under contract to the TD Jakes Real Estate Ventures Group for mixed use, mixed income, development of a mixed use, mixed income community. They have bought Phase One, which was only about seven acres, and then they're on track to buy the next phase. And both of these are now in permitting process with the city of Atlanta. So Tyler Perry Studios closed on their 37 acres. They've turned in, and I think it's already on the agenda for the last meeting, for their SAP permit. And then a month or two before, the TD Jakes Group turned theirs into the city for their entire 95 acres, including what they bought and what they have under contract. Because part of their closing is dependent on getting their land disturbance permit. So they're working towards that right now. So to try and give a little bit of context to all those things I just said and all these different people and kind of show you why it's been difficult to develop this site over this last, you know, 10 to 15 years. This, the entire parcel was the Fort Mac, the original Fort Mac. So it was a pretty regular shape, not exactly a rectangle, but nothing too strange. The army kept, if you look in the middle between the red and the green, there's one area I don't have any color around. That's the Veterans Administration. The army pulled that out before they gave it to Milra. And it's too small to show on this, but there were two very small credit union parcels that the army pulled that out and gave that to them, which made things more difficult for us. That's just property owners in the middle of a property with no frontage and utilities. But that was what the army did before we got it. So then if you look at what's outlined in red, that is the original sale of property to Tyler Perry Studios for the existing studios that we all know of today. So you can see what that left. It was good and bad. It was good that we kept all of the frontage on Lee Street and Campbellton Road. So that means when we develop those big fences and those walls, we'll be gone. We own every bit of that. But you can see it left a pretty strange piece of property that just wraps around the edge and barely connects at the top. So it's a challenge to figure out how to do that. Shared infrastructure with TPS sewer lines, water lines, and very, very old infrastructure that we had that was failing. The army after 2005, even though they were still there, they just quit keeping things up because they knew they were leaving. So a lot of challenges. So the red was what Tyler Perry Studios purchased originally. The blue at the bottom that wraps around the yellow, that is the 37 acres that they just purchased a few months ago for the entertainment district. The piece that's in yellow is what Easterly Government Properties bought. It's about nine acres on that big ForceCom building for FDA. And then there are two, it's separated, they don't touch, two areas of green. The green that goes all the way around the top and down the side, and then that square in the corner right above the blue. That is what TD Jakes Real Estate Ventures has for the mixed use development. So you can see it's a, it's a strange piece of property. All of that on the right upper half is Historic District. So all but a couple of those buildings have to remain. They need a lot of work. So that's another, that kind of pulls that out from doing a lot of new development. There will be a few new buildings in there. They have already closed on the piece that is by itself, which is kind of over to the left, below the red and above the blue. The rest of it, they will begin to close on once they have the LDP. It's scheduled that the next Phase Two purchase will probably be a big chunk of the property on Campbellton Road to begin to activate that. So this is, it's kind of difficult to see, but this is TD Jakes, they're rendering, and I have a site plan for the next one. But this is if you were across the martyr tracks and the railroad tracks up high, looking down with Lee Street and the martyr tracks at the bottom. So those are big buildings on Lee Street, and let's see if this shows it better. It's still hard to see. But if you look all the way at the bottom to the left, you've got apartment buildings, you've got hotel to play off of the entertainment district, a space for a grocery store. There's space for medical office. That was one of the things that the community talked about. As you move along the bottom to the right, you get into the Historic District. There will be a new hotel and then those buildings will be renovated for different uses and a couple of apartment buildings in that area. Or maybe one bigger one, depending on how. And then you could probably see this better. So this again is just the piece that they own at the top. That's the Campbellton Road area. And you can see multifamily along Campbellton Road, behind that townhomes. And then that area that comes down kind of into a corner right there, that is single family homes that they're looking at. So this deal was worked out a long time ago now. There were minimums. Well, there were minimums for a lot of things, but there really was, the plan that we were given, they had to, once they did their due diligence and figured out infrastructure and things and went to go to the city to turn in their permits, they had to, in each area, do that plan or within 20% of it. So that means if they, I'm making up this number, but let's say that area down there had 100 houses. When they do the actual plan and they do the engineering, they could have 120 or they could have 80. So they went through that whole exercise. We got the plan. They were turning it into the city. It's, this is actually the one they turned in and it's very similar to the plan that they had given us. And in each area, it fell within the 20%. So I checked it, our attorneys checked it, and so they fell into that area. So this is a rendering of the Tyler Perry Studios Entertainment District. It's going to have kind of a grand entrance off of Lee Street. You know, now the entrance to the studios is kind of tucked around the back a little bit. And there'll be a great big, large public gathering space in the middle. Behind it, a theater for live theater and movies. And then up front towards Lee Street, there's going to be several restaurants and there'll be more retail and office space in it as well. No residential in their side. It didn't fit their business model for one thing. But a big part of the property they were buying, we only got that from the army last year because it was contaminated from a dry cleaning plant that was on site and it created a huge plume of contamination. And so they cleaned, the army worked on cleaning that up. And it's, it's something that's always a pain to clean up. In a city like Atlanta, those are everywhere where they had dry cleaners. But so it's clean enough to build on. It's fine. But the army just deed restricted that, that you could not do residential. And so instead of trying to fight the army because you really can't fight the army, they, they didn't put any residential in their side there. So all of the residential is going on the TD Jakes side, which did not have any contamination that would cause a problem for residential. So the last slide is a little vague because I didn't want to put the actual items in here. These are things that I'm hoping we're going to get voted on at a board meeting next week. Part of it's already been done. But as I said, we're kind of moving, not kind of, we are moving from what was 10 to 15 years of planning and dreaming and to actually happening. And our organization is changing with that and what we're trying to accomplish and what we're doing. We're actually not on the base now. Our office went with the 37 acres that was sold to Tyler Perry Studios. So we're in a co-working space in East Point for a few months and then we're moving back onto the base. And we're going to have an office space that has a large classroom that also serves as an art gallery. And so we have worked for months and months and months, let's see, I've got it here somewhere, with our Community Engagement Subcommittee to really look at things. What do we want to do now that we're moving out of the idea stage to things actually being built for the community to make sure that they get included in that? So we went through many, many meetings and they came up with a great list of things. And so what I did is I went and looked at our resources. We went back to TJ, TD Jakes Real Estate Ventures because a lot of the things that were in their plan were already things the community said they wanted to do. But there were some other things we said, could you speed that up or could you do this also? And so this is a summary of the plan that we've come up with. It's four pages long. And I'll go ahead and tell you that some of the things Milra is going to do because that's already included in our budget and that's approved. But we are going to, we're going to have a group continuing to work as a liaison with local small businesses. We want to make sure they have a voice, that people can bring them to us so that some of these spaces that are available, we can make sure that people from the local community have an option, opportunity to get in there. As part of that, we are looking, and this is not approved, but this is one of the things we're working on. We've taken it to committees. The boards heard it. We want to take part of our sales proceeds and use that to provide grants for tenant build out. Because you may have somebody that they can, they can get funding for their business, maybe Invest Atlanta can help them. But if you're going in a first generation space or you're going for a different use for your retail space or your restaurant, that can be, you know, 40, 50, 100, $200,000. And we want to have some of those grants that are available for that. Right away, we want to start activating the base so that local residents can come onto the base and enjoy things. So we are going to start having, as soon as we get our power hooked up, we got to put in new outdoor power. So hopefully September is what we're aiming for. Regular food trucks. We're looking at probably doing it every Friday evening. Well, started actually at lunch so that the VA employees and patients can have those food trucks. We're going to make it nice. We're going to put out picnic tables. We want a little stage where somebody can play music, string up lights, and then have them stay through Friday evening. And the idea is this starts to form that place that people from the surrounding neighborhoods can come, meet their neighbors and hang out. It's not the full experience yet that we'll have in a few years with restaurants and things, but it's the beginning of that. In our office, we will have a half of the space we'll use for office. The other will be set aside as a meeting room and an art gallery. So we want to have ongoing art exhibits in this. We want to have a mixture of people that are well known, that you hear and see all the time. But we also want to give the opportunity for that younger artist in the community who hasn't had the chance to get their work shown in Buckhead or Virginia Highlands or one of these big galleries and give them their chance to have a real gallery opening and artist talks. We're also going to use that as a classroom. And we want to start, Pete Haley on our staff has already started doing the research on this. He has a ton of contacts. But we want to offer all kinds of classes for the community. It could be on small business startup and getting financing, first time home buyer seminars, whatever we hear from the community that they need, that's what we want to do and have these classes free of charge. You know, the same thing with the gallery. These events will be free. The food truck events will be free. We want to start having, we've done a couple of these, some bigger outdoor events. Now, not huge because we have issues with sound with Tyler Perry Studios and parking. But we did two drive-in movies, two Halloweens in a row. We started that during the pandemic because we were like, what can we do for families that their poor kids have been locked up at home and, you know, that's safe? And so we did drive-in movie for Halloween and people loved it. So we did it again. We had, and I wish I could remember the name of the group, but an amazing dance troupe that had a recital in our Historic District. We had a fashion show with local people as the models in our outdoor area. So we want to do a lot more of that. We're looking to try and do something fun for Christmas where people could drive through and, and see lights and Christmas decorations and get some hot chocolate and things like that. So we, we want to really start moving into that mode of getting people into, onto the base who live in the surrounding area and, and let them see what's going on. And we also, this we have to find a partner to do. So if any of you know a partner, some people have mentioned a couple of people. We want to start having an outdoor farmer's market as well. So the idea is just to activate the space. We want to have a small business makers fair that's more geared towards people who are making something. So that may be the, be the beginning of their small business. They may have been making it in their kitchen or their workshop. And this is the beginning of that where they get to go somewhere and sell some of their products. And then maybe some of the classes that Pete is bringing in would help them learn how to start a business. So when we get to TDJ Rev, that's part of what, I don't want to speak for that yet because we have to finish negotiating that and get it voted on. But what they had already committed to was a business incubator space. And so what Milra is saying, we would like, but that would probably be a couple of years from now. We would like to provide some money for that so that could start now, which now would probably mean the spring to get it built out, to start to have those things. But they've committed to large scale public art throughout the facility. So lots of things that they're working on that the community has wanted to see. You know, medical office was important. They've committed to creating a space for medical office there. So it's a very exciting time for me because I know for a long time, it was kind of, it was difficult to figure out what we're going to do. You know, there were financial constraints. They made it difficult to see past two or three months in the future. The property was very difficult to develop because you could see it's so oddly shaped and the infrastructure was just in really bad shape. But I think over the last couple of years, we have really worked through that and we've come up with some great plans that meet what we have to do for the army, for the BRAC regulations, that will be great for the community. And so we're pretty excited about where we're moving.
All right. Thank you so much, Mr. Burt. Before I turn it over to colleagues, I did have a couple of questions. And one is a clarifying question with the map that you showed earlier. Just so I confirm, the unshaded area is currently where there's a VA location and that's not part of any sort of.
So when I say that, it's that area, it's kind of surrounded by green and yellow. It's fairly small.
Yep.
That's the VA. Yep. So they, they own their property. They got it from the army. We don't have any control over what they do, but.
And then my question is, will that remain VA use?
It will. I've never heard from them that they have any intention of going anywhere else. It's heavily used. In fact, they've got a parking lot torn up and cleared off to build a parking deck. And then they've had, they've wanted to add some kind of urgent care building, which they haven't done. But they're actively looking at investing more money in it. So they, they will be there for the long term.
And that was going to be my next question. Just with all the expansion and investment happening around there, are they looking to also invest in that property? And it sounds like they are. And it sounds like they are thinking out loud in support of Atlanta's 18,000 veterans. Uh, when I've received veteran services, I've had to go way out in the metro area to, to receive specific types of treatment. So just thinking about where we can consolidate, uh, those sorts of services in our region's largest city. I just think there's a prime opportunity with that.
Yeah, they plan to be there. They have not a lot of extra property, but a little bit. I didn't put that on the list, uh, but a couple of years ago, there was one small building next to them. They kind of took a chunk out of the corner of their property. I think this was before I came to Milra or it might've been right after I got there. Uh, but they sold that to the VA. So that kind of squared up their property. And then the TD Jakes group has been trying to have conversations with them, uh, maybe offering to build the parking deck so that it could be shared. Because you know, a lot of times shared parking works. If they're going to do a hotel next door, the patients park there and the employees during the day. And then the hotel guests could park at night. So they're looking at how they could do that and do a little bit bigger deck. So, but no, they're, they intend to, they fully seem to intend to stay there and even expand a little bit.
Okay. And then you said the blue is the 37 acre future entertainment district?
That's right.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, the blue is what they bought, the 37 acres for the entertainment district. So Lee Street is coming down the right. And so the entrance is about halfway in the blue where it'll have that, a grand entrance off Lee Street there.
So then my final two questions, um, can you talk to how, if at all, any of these projects are incorporating transit and transit access? I know Lakewood McPherson is right off of Lee Street. And on our north side with Campbellton Road, you have a future BRT corridor. Is, what is being done to incorporate those sorts of projects? Cause one, one of the things I find interesting, at least with the current zoning regulations, um, you know, there's no city requirements for parking, for instance. And so it gives developers an opportunity to be more thoughtful and intentional about their site plans. And so on the east side of Lee Street, or even on the north side on Campbellton Road, I imagine that might be something that'd be worth considering as you think about access to those properties. We just want to get your feedback or give you a chance to respond.
So that's one of the huge benefits of this site is access to two heavy rail MARTA stations. I don't know any other development site that I can think of that has that. And so they definitely want to take advantage of that, uh, several different ways. So the main thing is, um, what's called the Fort Mac Mile, which I wish I had a pointer, but it's kind of like, it, it would come down from the MARTA station at the bottom, go up through the middle of the property. So it's kind of like the main street of the project. And that will have extensive walking trails and bike trails, uh, that will tie in across the street to the extension that's coming from the Belt Line. And then it will go up to the, um, Oakland City Station. And it also will turn and go all the way through the property, through the townhomes to the single family. So this will be a really great, if you lived all the way over in this corner, you could walk, you could run, you could bike, you could take a golf cart, uh, and, and feel safe, you're out of the traffic and go around. And so have really good, uh, access to those MARTA stations. And then of course MARTA's got their Campbellton Road BRT line. And that has been the subject of a lot of discussions with the developers about that. At one time they were talking about bringing it south of the houses. If you're familiar with the area, Campbellton Road goes up, Fort Mac is along Campbellton Road. And where it straightens out, there's like, we call it the triangle of houses there. So they were looking at coming south of that and, uh, through the edge of our property and then going back to Campbellton Road. But I don't know where that stands. I don't know if that's what they're looking at now or Campbellton Road. But regardless, there will be several great stations on the BRT, like where you come in now. I can't think of the street, but there are three or four streets that come together on Campbellton Road. We're going to realign ours, or they will realign one of ours with that to make a better intersection. And they'll be like, kind of a major stopping point for the BRT right there. So that's, that's a big selling point for them to try and make sure that there's really great access to the transit.
Okay. And then my last question, I know I asked this last year, but I'll ask it again. Have y'all looked at any sort of interim, um, enhancements, uh, for pedestrian safety and access? And what I'm thinking about is specifically on the south side of Campbellton Road. You have several MARTA bus stops, existing MARTA bus stops serving Route 71. And there's no sidewalk over there, sidewalks are on the north side of the street. But there's bus stops on the south side of the street. And then you have the, the Fort McPherson wall with the barbed wire and a very, very narrow grass strip. And then you have the street. And so if you are pedestrian headed eastbound on Route 471, it's not a very safe condition. And I know there's a lot of movement happening on the real estate side. I was just curious of what can be done from a interim, uh, safety standpoint to give pedestrians safer access to the, the bus, uh, stops along the route.
It, it is a problem. I mean, you can walk on the north side of Campbellton Road, but to your point, if you're trying to get, catch the bus going on the direction where you got to be on the south side, it, there's not great places to cross and they're not great places to stand. We had had discussions, I, I can't remember who I had with, I'd have to look back through my notes with somebody from MARTA. So we had talked about trying to do something temporary for at least a couple of those with crosswalks. And then it looked like all this development was going to happen faster. I mean, I would think this time last year, I thought they would probably be buying phase two and starting construction on that side. Um, but they were delaying, there were lots of things with figuring out the sewer lines and all. And then they had to go in for the permit and they, they just have to wait till they get it. I, I think that's a great point and I'm glad you brought it up. And I'm going to put that in my notes to go back and see who I reached out to before and see if there's something we can do with at least a couple of those bus stops so that it's a safer crossing and then a safer place to stand so that you're not kind of right up on the, so I'll follow up on that.
I said Route 71, I think I meant Route 68, but I appreciate you and your, your responses. Councilmember Lewis.
David, I want to say as a board member, I want to say I appreciate your leadership and your assistance to the board. You caught me up to speed and I want to say that you've, were one of the premier architects to putting together this plan. I wish you would have had the colorful, uh, views of what it will look like so the young folks could see what the future of, of the, what I see as one of the largest developments in the country, uh, with Tyler Perry bringing his entire studios, then buying BT and VH1 now, and I see TD Jakes coming. So this is going to be what turns District 12 into the envy. Uh, my, my question to you and some stuff I know that the folks at home are listening because they were looking at more of a community benefit from it. Uh, could you explain the BRAC?
Yes. So, uh, BRAC, the BRAC laws have to do with the Base Realignment, uh, Commission that this falls under. And so it is thousands of pages of laws on how all of this has to be done. So, you know, I, I know enough to be dangerous, but I always go back and ask the attorneys because our attorneys, actually Greenberg Tarrick have specialists in that. But, um, it is very specific on how the funds from property sales can be spent. And there are 12 items that they can be spent on. And if you spend them outside that area, they could come back and demand that you give them the money back. So it's very, very serious and we actually have to give reports that show what we spent. Now, one of those is planning for the future. So in the past, it never mattered because pretty much everything that was done at Milra the last few years and before I got there was planning for the future. That's not exactly what it says, but that's basically what one of the 12 is. So those things fall into that, that pot of money. But as we start to sell out the property and we're not doing that planning, we had to be very careful and very thoughtful on how we spent the money. So we started with, we had those 12 buckets that it had to fit in to be legal. And then we started with what the community asked us and said they wanted us to do. And so my thing was let's ask the community, our community engagement subcommittee, let's get that list. Then let's see what we can, what we can put into one of those buckets. That's an easy one. If we can put it into the bucket, we do that. If it's something that we can't do as Milra, I tried to find creative ways that we could do that with the TD Jakes group. And so we've spent two or three months kind of negotiating with them on some of these things. And I think we're very close to the next day or two, to having that document to bring to y'all next week at the board. And so that's kind of what we did. Basically, the money for the most part has to be spent on the base. Uh, we can't spend it off the base. And so that limits what we can do. But, but when it fits into that, a lot of these classes we were talking about, you know, suppose somebody said, we should have classes somewhere. We're like, okay, we'll pay for the classes, we just have to have them here. And so those are the things that we tried to do to make sure we did not run afoul of any laws, but also are good stewards of the money and make sure that as we kind of finish out, and we should be around for, um, we'll have to legally be around for seven years, but we should have funds to do all these great things we want to do for the community for seven to 10 years. That's what we're trying to budget out to do.
And I just wanted to make sure you were able to explain that in the public. Cause I know a, uh, my office is getting calls and I, we've been in very heated, uh, meetings. But I would say that the community felt super involved. And when I hear the, uh, the plans that you're laying out right now, these are the same things I was hearing in that debate. And so I know that we're coming to an agreement. So I appreciate you for today. I appreciate you for your leadership on the board and leading the board in the right way. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Councilmember Lewis. Any other questions or comments for colleagues? I just do want to state for the public record before folks start coming after me on Twitter. I meant Route 83 for Campbellton Road. Uh, thank you so much, uh, and, uh, good to see you again.
Yeah.
I look forward to seeing you next year and hopefully, uh, we'll have some dirt turned before that next meeting.
That's what I'm hoping for too. So thank you very much.
All right. All right, colleagues, that concludes presentations. That takes us into our regular agenda, which our next item ironically includes a presentation. Uh, so we'll go into public hearing items. Uh, Mr. Young, or actually Mr. Hulse from Department of, uh, uh, City Planning.
Ooh.
Yes. Uh, so we actually have to go into a public hearing to take this next item, uh, and through a, through a vote. And so I will move to, uh, enter into a public hearing.
Second.
Second by Winston, please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed.
All right, we have now entered into a public hearing. That was favorable, four yeas, two nays. So we have Nate Hulse with the Department of City Planning. Uh, and I believe you have a presentation for this particular item.
I'll read that caption.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Evans will read the caption.
It's number one, item number one on the agenda, 2301254, an ordinance by Councilmember Dustin Hillis to adopt the Northwest Atlanta Industrial Area Freight Cluster Plan to amend the City of Atlanta's 2021 Comprehensive Development Plans to incorporate by reference the Northwest Atlanta Freight Plan and for other purposes.
All right. And, um, just actually before going to the presentation, the public comments typically are before the presentation for a public hearing. Is that correct? Okay. So just, I'm, I'm stating that out loud because we had no one sign up for, for public comments. So I do want the record to reflect that. All right, Mr. Hulse, you, you have the floor.
Thank you. Um, Jared, do you have a, the presentation, the post? Gotcha. Thanks. Uh, thanks, Councilmember. And, uh, thanks for opening a few minutes of your, uh, meetings today for public hearing. I'm Nate Hoseel, the project manager, uh, for Freight ATL Northwest. Uh, in early 2022, the Department of City Planning teamed up with the Atlanta Regional Commission, Invest Atlanta, Councilmember Hillis, uh, to study the interactions between freight in the neighborhoods and around the industrial districts in Northwest Atlanta. The plan recommends, uh, updates to the city's designated truck routes, short-term and long-term corridor intersection improvements along those truck routes, and strategies to retain and attract industrial businesses and jobs in this growing part of Atlanta. Since my update to you in April, we posted final versions of the reports on our website. We also went to all 12 of the MPUs in the steady area to receive their support. Uh, the city area includes the industrial districts north of Joseph E. Boone. These would include the Armour Yards, uh, the industrial districts along Chattahoochee Avenue and the Upper West Side neighborhoods, and the northern parts of Fulton Industrial Boulevard. The area includes about half of the city's zoned industrial space and about 25 million square feet of industrial flex buildings. Uh, in its, uh, in this area, we have, uh, four clusters of industrial businesses, uh, that rely on safe and efficient truck routes, uh, in these, uh, industrial spaces. And these, uh, sectors are distributions and logistics, food processing and manufacturing, construction products and services, and film production. And together, these four sectors employ over 15,000 people, most earning living wages and contributing over $2 billion to the regional economy. There's also three freight terminals, including Norfolk Southern Inman Yard, uh, which has intermodal operations, uh, that generate about 2,000 trucks daily. Uh, the area is changing drastically as we all know. More residents and different types of businesses are moving in the area. More cars and pedestrians are sharing the streets. So during the pandemic and into today, however, there's record-breaking growth in not only multifamily development and mixed use, but also new industrial space. E-commerce, co-warehousing, advanced manufacturing and research and development, uh, are these types of businesses moving into the area. So the recommendation in the plans, uh, focus on capital projects, policies for retaining and attracting industrial jobs, uh, and transportation strategies and additional planning. Capital projects mainly center on designing and retrofitting intersections and corridors along the truck routes. Uh, also include, uh, traffic change, uh, traffic signals, uh, maintaining, repairing, and even replacing some of the bridges in the area. We have recommendations to inform future efforts, uh, by Invest Atlanta and others to retain and attract industrial businesses and to train Atlanta residents to compete for those jobs. We also propose additional studies such as, uh, looking at better circulation and truck access in Armour Yards. And we also recommend changes to the city's, uh, the city's designated truck route network, which you actually see in your Exhibit B. Uh, these changes include removing segments of Collier Road, Ellsworth Industrial, Huff and Hell Mill. These corridors are experiencing a lot of growth, new residential development. Uh, they're no longer suited for trucks cutting through the area to get from one highway to another. Most trucks will be using Chattahoochee Avenue, North Side, Marietta Boulevard, and other designated routes to enter in and out of the area, uh, including the industrial districts and the operations in the area, uh, as well as crossing the, across the city. So a truck wouldn't be going through residential neighborhoods or these mixed-use developments anymore. Hopefully, um, they would be following the city designated truck routes. Uh, this, uh, these changes reflect, uh, the current work that ATL dot is doing as well as informing the regional transportation, uh, plan and the region-wide effort for their freight update, uh, led by ARC, or the Atlanta Regional Commission. Uh, these also reflect our technical work and our community involvement with the neighborhoods during our planning process. Over the course of that planning process, we incorporated field observations, technical analysis and best practices from peer cities. We looked at socioeconomic data, uh, on industrial growth and development. We also coupled all that work with our community involvement throughout the process. Our process included virtual and in-person events. We did walking tours in our industrial districts, uh, to get a firsthand accounts from residents and what it feels like to walk along a truck route. We did pop-ups and virtual focus groups with residents and industrial businesses. We also met with residents at, uh, Central Village Neighborhood along Chattahoochee to get their perspective. During our MPU presentations, uh, during the month of June and July, and went to 12 of them, uh, we received full support to adopt the plan. Comments shared at these meetings were primarily focused on just following through with implementation, uh, especially on the recommendations on safety improvements at busy intersections, uh, looking at ways to communicate the truck route change to third-party mapping apps and then businesses and the CID's in the area, the community improvement districts, uh, as well as enforcing the traffic laws, you know, working with APD on, um, citing truck drivers who are cutting through neighborhoods that they shouldn't be cutting through. Uh, the Department of City Planning, and I am, I'm committed to coordinating that, all that work with ATL dot. In fact, we're already having discussions about how do we go to the third-party mapping, uh, companies to put those into Waves or Google Maps, uh, the truck route changes. So, uh, the Department of City Planning recommends, uh, adopting the plan, uh, along with the truck route changes, which are in your Exhibit B. And I really do appreciate Councilmember Hillis's support during the entire process and coming out to all of our walking tours, as well as your committee's support. So thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from colleagues? Councilmember Lewis.
How much extra help did your department need to get this done? I, I'm, I'm saying that because I have a quadrant of my, of my district that needs the same type of investment. And this is amazing work that you've done. This is amazing work.
Thanks. Um, well, I had a great consultant team, Preston Smith, uh, so I needed consultant work. Uh, ATL dot, when I applied for this grant, it was pre-COVID and ATL dot had just got up on its feet. And since then ATL dot has just, they're, they're doing great and they had great management, uh, on our, on their end to help me with all the technical work, the traffic studies.
So this is pre-COVID, correct?
Yeah, I applied pre-COVID and we finally went through the delay during COVID through procurement. And it took me, um, we started in early 2022 to start the actual planning work. Um, ARC requires a 20% match for the grant, so I had to find money for match. Councilmember Hillis, uh, and Invest Atlanta, uh, were my matching funding sources. If we were to look at other industrial districts in the, in the city, we could replicate some of the work we did and maybe save some heartache and, and money by, uh, learning from our experience in Northwest Atlanta. Um, but other than that, it was, uh, it was a lot of work with different departments, the private sector and, and council members and Invest Atlanta.
Well, this is amazing work and I appreciate you for sharing this with us today.
Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Amos.
Yes, sir. Um, thank you, um, first and foremost, all the community involvement that you was able to pull off. Um, you crossed so many NPUs and neighborhoods. You crossed so many MPUs and neighborhoods and a lot of, some of the southern portion, as you already know, is, is in District Three. My concern is with the state legislative plan with the truck weights last year. How is that new weight limit affect, how did it affect your plan when we talk about preparing our bridges and our streets and things of that nature?
You're getting into ATL dot-specific territory with bridge capacity. I know they're fully aware of it. I know that there is already strain on some of these bridges that support, like the intermodal facility over M&amp;Yards. So I know the ATL dot colleagues are very well aware of it. Learning about this truck activity and the industrial businesses, you know, with all of this new weight, you're getting heavier and heavier trucks that pick up different pickups throughout the industrial district. So they're like lower than truck capacity, and they go to one business, pick up some stuff, put it on another. And they're just getting heavier. They're putting more stuff into those trailers. But the specifics to that, I would have to refer you to ATL dot.
Councilmember Amos. I just had one quick question, just similar to Councilmember Lewis's line of questioning. I really appreciate that because it made me think about this. But any sorts of lessons learned that can be applied to other parts of the city, regardless of the size of industrial corridors? Imagine we all have parts of our communities that see a larger amount of truck traffic than we, we might want to see. And how do we best manage that and how would we best navigate that? I'm hoping there may have been some lessons learned that came from this experience that out the gate can be shared across the rest of the city.
Thanks. We'll do, mark it, make sure to share it.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none. Before we move on the actual item, we have to move out of public hearing. So I'll move to exit the public hearing. Second by Lewis, please open the vote.
The vote is open.
All right.
Vote is closed.
The motion to take us out of public hearing is favorable, five yays, zero nays. I will go ahead and move approval on the ordinance. Second by Lewis, any discussion? Seeing none, please open the vote.
The vote is open. Would all members please vote? And the vote is closed.
Item is favorable, five yays, zero nays. I do want to let my colleagues know this is a dual-referred item, and it will be forwarded to the Transportation Committee tomorrow.
Thanks.
Thank you. All right, that takes us out of public hearing items. And then that takes us to communications. We've already taken item number two and number three. And so that then takes us to ordinances for, for reading. We just have one item. Mr. Evans, if you could sign the caption.
Item number four is 2301379, an ordinance by Community Development Human Services Committee to amend the Atlanta City Code, Part Two, Chapter 158, Article Two, to correct errors in Ordinance 2201829, including account information for the Tree Trust Fund, a Scrivener's error regarding soil area requirements, and errors regarding the requirements for tree replacements in residential subdivisions and for other purposes.
All right, so no action needs to be taken on that item. So that takes us to ordinances for second reading. Item number five, please sign the caption. And Deputy Commissioner Voss, if you can come to the podium.
2301341, an ordinance by Community Development Human Services Committee authorizing the mayor or his designee, or the chief procurement officer or his designee on behalf of the City of Atlanta to acquire from the Conservation Fund approximately 1.89 acres of real property located at 123 and 145 Dearborn Street Southeast, Atlanta, Georgia 30317, for development in, as an addition to the City of Atlanta Park Kirkwood Urban Forest Preserve, authorizing the chief procurement officer or his designee on behalf of the city to execute all documents necessary to acquire the property, authorizing acquisition, due diligence, closing costs, signage, demolition, site stabilization, fencing, and other site development costs to be paid from the Park Impact Fee South Account in an amount not to exceed $2,000,16,739.10 as indicated in the account listed below, amending the fiscal year 2023 general government capital outlay fund budgets in the Departments of Parks and Recreation and Finance, Park South Service District by transferring to and from the various accounts listed, waiving Section 2-1541D of the Procurement and Real Estate Code of the City Code of Ordinances, Article 10, and for other purposes.
Thank you. Deputy Commissioner Voss.
Thank you, and good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of council. This is a very exciting purchase for the department and for the city. Councilmember Bakhtiari mentioned it last time during first read. This parcel is 1.89 acres on Dearborn Street. It's two parcels, 123 and 145. This land has been necessary to complete Kirkwood Urban Forest for many, many years. And so when it became available, we appreciate the Conservation Fund for reaching out and being able to act as our buyer in this situation so that we can actually expand Kirkwood Urban Forest and then better yet, work with the community to try to find a better entrance to the park. If you've been to Kirkwood Urban Forest, there's many ways to get into it, but there's not one particular grand entrance, and this would help solidify that going forward. So we're looking very forward to working with Conservation Fund to completing this deal.
Any questions or comments from colleagues? Motion to approve by Winston, second by Lewis, please open the vote.
The vote is open. And the vote is closed.
Item is favorable, five yays, zero nays. That takes us to item number six.
2301342, an ordinance by Community Development Human Services Committee authorizing the mayor or his designee on behalf of the City of Atlanta to enter into an amended and restated Atlanta Beltline Corridor Lease Agreement on behalf of the City of Atlanta with the Atlanta Development Authority, DBA Invest Atlanta, by and through its Designated Special Agent, Atlanta Beltline, Inc., to include additional trail segments and uses of trails and to add provisions to facilitate the incorporation of additional trail segments being acquired by ABI into leased premises and for other purposes.
Deputy Commissioner Voss.
Thanks again, Councilmember Dozier. This ordinance is actually a restating and an amendment of a current agreement that has been in place since 2014. At that time, we only had three trails. We had the Eastside Trail, we had the Northeast Walking Trail, and we had the Southwest Trail. That has greatly changed over the last 10 years. This amendment and this restating of the entire agreement will actually allow us, as we move into additional acquisitions and development of the trail, to incorporate those sections of the trail into the corridor lease agreement. So it is between the city and Invest Atlanta to allow for that continuation of services. It also does a better job of spelling out how those trails are handed over from ABI to the city, including, you know, making sure that all the completion, the scope of the work, and that the maintenance functions are taken care of before they get traded over. So we're looking forward to this new agreement and happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions or comments from colleagues? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and move approval. Second by Winston, any discussion? Please open the vote.
Vote is open. And the vote is closed.
All right, the item is favorable, five yays, zero nays. All right, number seven.
2301343, an ordinance by Community Development Human Services authorizing the mayor on behalf of the Department of Parks and Recreation to accept a reimbursement grant from the Georgia Recreation and Parks Association in the amount not to exceed $185,200.00 in accordance with the Section 2-910 of the Atlanta Code and authorizing an amendment to the fiscal year 2023 intergovernmental grant fund budget to anticipate and appropriate, and authorizing the mayor or his designee on behalf of the City of Atlanta to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Georgia Recreation and Park Association and for other purposes.
Colleagues, there's an amendment for this item. Essentially, that amendment attaches to Exhibit A, which is the MOU. I believe that was emailed to all of you before the meeting. And so I will move to amend. Second by Winston, any discussion? Please open the vote.
Vote is open. And the vote is closed.
All right, the motion to amend is favorable, five yays, zero nays. Deputy Commissioner Voss.
I promise I'll sit down after this one. Just wanted to acknowledge our recreation team, Shelby Beverley and a number of our staff members. This is the fourth consecutive time we've received this grant in the last year. We've been able to get reimbursement for over a half a million dollars towards our supplies for both our after-school and our Campus Friends program. This one actually is related to this summer's Campus Friends program, so that it's very timely. It's $185,000 from one of the state's nonprofit organizations that supports Parks and Rec across the entire state, the Georgia Parks and Recreation Society. So we appreciate them for continuing to have faith in us and allowing us to get these reimbursement grants and happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions or comments for Deputy Commissioner Voss? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and move to approve as amended. Second by Winston, please open the vote.
The vote is open. And the vote is closed.
Favorable as amended, five yays, zero nays. All right, that takes us to item number eight.
2301344, an ordinance by Community Development Human Services Committee authorizing the chief financial officer to charge to and pay from the Brownfield revolving loan fund accounts listed herein pursuant to the intergovernmental agreement with the Atlanta Development Authority, DBA Invest Atlanta, authorized by Ordinance 2301041 in an amount not to exceed $239,438.65 to continue the remediation of brownfields and for other purposes.
We have Kierda Holmes, Director of the Office of Zoning and Development. Good to see you. If you don't mind, tell us a little about the legislation.
Sure. Good afternoon, councilmembers. This legislate, we, we, the Office of Zoning and Development has an IGA with Invest Atlanta where we issue funds to help us operate our revolving loan program fund. We do have a couple of dollars that have not been expended in a couple of other accounts. We're moving all that money to this IGA to continue to support our revolving loan program and to continue to be an award-winning program.
Any questions or comments from colleagues? Seeing none, I'll move to approve. Second by Winston, please open the vote.
The vote is open. And the vote is closed.
Item is favorable, five yays, zero nays. All right, that takes us to item number nine.
Item number nine is 2301348, an ordinance by Councilmember Byron D. Amos to establish the Atlanta Youth Council to provide advice, assistance, counsel, coordination, and other resources to enhance opportunities for youth development and for other purposes.
Councilmember Amos, motion to hold. Motion to hold. Second by Winston, please open the vote.
Vote is open. And the vote is closed.
All right, the item is held, five yays, zero nays. All right, that takes us to item number 10. And colleagues, for, well, actually, for number 10, I believe the caption changes. So I'll go ahead and move to bring forth the substitute so that we can read in the corrected caption. Sure, second. Second by Winston, please open the vote.
The vote is open. And the vote is closed.
All right, motion to bring forth the substitute is favorable. And just for the public's awareness, the, that substitute changes the dollar amounts that are reflected in the caption. So that's what's happening there. Mr. Evans, if you can sign the caption.
2301358, an ordinance by Councilmember Jason Winston as substituted by Community Development Human Services Committee to authorize the mayor or his designee on behalf of the Department of Grants and Community Development to enter into housing assistance payment contracts with 949-953 Washington Street Apartments LLC for a term commencing on June 1, 2023 and ending on May 31, 2024 in an amount not to exceed $253,893.00 for the purposes of providing rental subsidies at Washington Street Apartments in order to house 16 low-income families and with 8 Vanira LLC for a term commencing September 1, 2023 and ending on August 31, 2024 in an amount not to exceed $366,893.00 for the purposes of providing rental subsidies at the Vanira Village Apartments in order to house 28 low-income families, both under the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Section 8 Moderate Rehabilitation Program. All contracted work to be charged to and paid from the accounts listed herein and for other purposes.
Hey, Commissioner Lannan, good to see you again.
Yes, sir. Washington Street and Vanira are two of only three Section 8 housing available to City of Atlanta residents. We bring this legislation forth to align the contractual period with HUD's contractual period and so that we won't have to repeat it annually. So we are asking for your consideration and approval.
Motion by Winston to approve on substitute. I will second that. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. And the vote is closed.
Item is favorable on substitute, five yays, zero nays. That takes us to number 11. And colleagues, similar to the last item, we do have a substitute for this item that also adjusts the caption to tweak the dollar amounts to be correct and accurate. And so I'll move to bring forth the substitute for number 11. Second by Winston, please open the vote.
Vote is open. Would all members please vote? And the vote is closed.
Motion to bring forth the substitute is favorable. Please sign the caption.
2301359, an ordinance by Councilmember Jason Winston as substituted by Community Development Human Services Committee amending the FY 2023 intergovernmental grant fund budget by adding anticipations and appropriations in a total amount not to exceed $620,481.00 for the purposes of creating the budget amount authorized by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for the City of Atlanta's Section 8 Moderate Rehabilitation Program for the housing assistance payment contracts for 949-953 Washington Street Apartments LLC in an amount not to exceed $253,893.00 and 8 Vanira Village LLC in an amount not to exceed $366,588.00 and for other purposes.
Commissioner Lannan.
All right, this is just part two of what you just approved. So if you would please approve this one.
All right. Motion to approve on substitute. All right, motion to approve on substitute by Winston, second by Lewis. Please open the vote.
Vote is open. And the vote is closed.
Item is favorable on substitute, four yays, zero nays. Thank you for sharing. All right, that takes us to item number 12.
2301360, an ordinance by Councilmember Matt Westmoreland to amend the 2023 Annual Action Plan Budget of the 2020-2024 Consolidated Plan to anticipate and appropriate United States Department of Housing and Urban Development award funding in an amount not to exceed $24,783,601.00 to amend the 2019 Annual Action Plan Budget, the 2020 Annual Action Plan Budget, the 2021 Annual Action Plan Budget, the 2022 Annual Action Plan Budget, and the 2023 Annual Action Plan Budget of the 2020-2024 Consolidated Plan for the purposes of reprogramming funds in an amount not to exceed $9,814,197.37 to authorize the mayor or his designee to enter into contractual agreements with subrecipients included in the 2019 Annual Action Plan Budget, the 2020 Annual Action Plan Budget, and the 2021 Annual Action Plan Budget, the 2022 Annual Action Plan Budget, and the 2023 Annual Action Plan Budget of the 2020-2024 Consolidated Plan for the purpose of funding and reprogramming Community Development Block Run, Block Grant Program, Community Development Block Grant Coronavirus Program, Emergency Solutions Grant, Home Investments, Home Investment Partnerships Grant Program, the Housing Opportunities for Persons with AIDS Program Projects in a total amount not to exceed $34,597,798.37. All contracted work shall be charged to and paid from the accounts listed herein and for other purposes. A 30-day public hearing period and public hearing is required. The public hearing will be held on August 7, 2023 during the full council meeting.
Commissioner Lannan, my apologies. I thought you were off the hook on the last one, but do you have anything to add on this?
No, I wasn't going to sit down before this one. That was a lot of numbers and annual action plans, but this is in reference to that FY 23 funding from HUD that I mentioned earlier and the NOFA process that we've undergone. So what we are asking, of course, with the public hearing that's required is that upon the conclusion of that public hearing, we are permitted to proceed with contracting all of the funds from the most recent allocation plus the remnants of funds from previous allocations, and we would submit that to HUD. and we will submit that to HUD.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from colleagues? All right, seeing none, colleagues, I actually will move to forward this with no recommendation and we're going to do that because that public hearing that was referencing the caption and as Commissioner had made mention to. And so, um, I'll, I'll move to forward with no recommendation. It's your second. Second by Winston, any discussions, seeing none, please open the vote.
The vote is open. And the vote is closed.
The motion to forward with no recommendation is favorable and as mentioned, at our next city council meeting on August the 7th, uh, during the CDHS report, we'll doubt the business for this particular item.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that takes us to item number 13.
2301384, an ordinance by Councilmember Amir Faroki to name, to rename the historic Fourth Ward Skate Park, the Thomas Taylor Skate Park, to waive certain provisions of section 138-8 and 2-2 of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances and for other purposes.
Colleagues, uh, the author of this paper, uh, reached out to me and asked if we could amend the caption, uh, so Thomas Taylor, uh, uh, has a middle initial that he was referred by and so we'd like that reflected in the caption. So Thomas F. Taylor Skate Park, uh, you are all emailed, uh, amendment, uh, if you need any, uh, further clarity on that caption, but I move to amend to add, uh, F as in foxtrot, um, to the name. It's your second. Second by Winston, please open the vote.
Vote is open. And the vote is closed.
Item, um, has been amended, five yeas, zero nays. Uh, I move to approve as amended. Second by Winston, any discussion? Seeing none, please open the vote.
Vote is open. And the vote is closed.
Item is favorable as amended, five yeas, zero nays. That takes us to item number 14. Uh, so we're done with ordinances, that takes us to resolutions, so item number 14. And I believe, uh, Commissioner Prince, you're going to be speaking to this item, so, uh, feel free to come to the podium and Mr. Evans, if you can sign the caption.
Item number 14 is 23R3812, a resolution by Councilmembers Andrea Elboon and Dustin Hillis authorizing the mayor or his designee to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the City of South Fulton on behalf of the Department of Planning, uh, City Planning, granting the City of Atlanta permission to oversee permitting construction and inspections for the portion of any structure extending into the City of South Fulton at 4520 Patent Drive Southwest and for other purposes.
Commissioner Prince, good to see you again.
Hello, happy to be here.
If you don't mind, tell us a little bit about the legislation and we'll go.
Well, there are three parcels that are being consolidated, it's an assemblage, and they are accessed off of, oh gosh, the name of the street, just Patent Drive, there it is, in the City of South Fulton. One of the parcels is in the City of Atlanta, so two are in City of South Fulton, one's in City of Atlanta, and they can only be accessed by this street in the City of South Fulton. So the idea here is to put them all together and have the City of Atlanta oversee the building permitting process. Now, the parcels would still be subject to the zoning in the cit, the one parcel in the City of Atlanta would be subject to our zoning, the other parcels would be subject to South Fulton zoning. It's just the permitting that the agreement is proposed for.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from colleagues? Councilman Ramus.
It's, it's def, uh, so are, are our permitting requirements similar, the same as City of South Fulton? Well, basically, I guess it's a legal question. What liability are we opening ourselves up to by having this joint municipal type thing?
Good afternoon, Amber A. Robinson, City of Atlanta Department of Law. I actually had a opportunity to speak with, um, Deputy Chief of Staff Pace concerning this matter and there were some, uh, um, concerns expressed. Um, it had been our understanding that this was going to be held, we will be prepared to, um, discuss the concerns, um, and our position from a legal standpoint regarding this paper at FEC, um, tomorrow.
Thank you, and that's correct. Um, the author has asked for this to be.
It was our understanding that this would be held in this committee and it would not be moving forward to FEC. It, it, so it had been our understanding that this was going to be held in this committee. Um, the proceedings of this committee indicated that it was being voted on and so as to not stand in the way of what may have been the preference, we would reserve our comment to, for FEC, but it would be our preference that this be held in this committee.
Mr. Pace, you want to add anything to that? We're gonna, I'm gonna move to hold, but before I do, I just want to make sure that's, okay, I'm gonna go ahead and move to hold. Second by Amos, please open the vote.
The vote is open. And the vote is closed.
Item is held, five yeas and zero nays. Sorry for the confusion, I, I got word from the author and from the team that that's the movement that we're gonna take. Just got a little ahead of myself on, uh, going through the, the process, so appreciate the clarification. All right, so that was item number 14 for resolutions. Uh, number 15.
23R3819, a resolution by Councilmembers Amir Faroki, Alex Quan, Matt Westmoreland, Jason Winston, Byron D. Amos, Jason Dozier, Dustin Hillis, Andrea Elboon, Marcy Collier Overstreet and Antonio Lewis in support of the Atlanta Legacy Makers Initiative honoring Mayors Ivan Allen Jr. and Maynard Jackson and for other purposes.
Colleagues, uh, I am aware of this project. It is, uh, work being done by the Atlanta Downtown Improvement District. Uh, if y'all have ever read the book Where Peachtree Meets Street Auburn or Where Peachtree Street Meets, Where Peachtree Meets, thank you, Where Peachtree Street Meets Sweet Auburn, uh, talking about the lives of Maynard Jackson, his family, Ivan Allen, his family, this art installation kind of, uh, reflecting that history and that unique history between those two families. It'll be downtown. Uh, I know the main author is not here, but I am a co-sponsor and I serve on the ADID Board and I'm happy to go ahead and move this resolution forward. Second by Winston, please open the vote.
The vote is open. And the vote is closed.
Item is favorable, five yeas, zero nays. Uh, that concludes resolutions. Uh, we have no dual referred items. We have the one item that we had off the hill, we already took that with the rest of the communications, so it appears we have completed our legislative agenda for today. Uh, any comments from colleagues? I have a couple of general remarks myself, but any others from colleagues before we close out? All right, just the one, uh, remark that I have is, uh, we alluded to this several times in the meeting, but the next full council meeting will be on August 7th, 2023, because we are about to go on city council recess, uh, from July 17th through July 28th. So, uh, the next CDH meeting, CDHS meeting actually will be, uh, on August 15th, so a little past a month from now. So for those of y'all in the room or at home who, uh, miss, are gonna miss CDHS hearings, uh, they are posted online on, on YouTube and on Facebook, so I'm sure our city council com staff can help you with that, uh, but just wanted to make y'all aware about the next couple of meetings. Uh, you have something, Councilmember Lewis?
I want to also thank, say thank you to the Department of Parks and Recreation for working with my office and making sure we're able to open up Empire Park. I do know that we received information from the department and after 10 years of having the park closed, we'll finally open it back up. So I want to say I appreciate you to, to the department and the mayor's office for their assistance on opening back up that park. Thank you.
Hey, Councilman Lewis. Anyone else? All right, with that, we are adjourned.